The Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 6:00 PM. We are meeting on Wednesday, June 29th, at the Solomon P. Ortiz Intermediate School Cafeteria in Robstown, Texas. I am going to call roll of our Regents. Alba Shakuram, Regent Everett.
Here.
Regent Garza.
Here.
Regent Hutchison.
Here.
Regent Turner.
Here.
Regent Villarreal.
Here.
I'm Regent Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business, and Regent Kelly just walked in as well, so please mark him as present as well. We may have one other Regent joining us who had a late afternoon appointment, and he hopes to be here within a few minutes. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And Regent Villarreal, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a tradition at Delmar College where we begin every meeting of the Board of Regents by reading our vision statement, so I would invite the audience to please read that vision statement along with us. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Thank you. Delmar College will be streaming live audio and video from this Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exceptions of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. At this time on our agenda, we have an opportunity for public comment on any item not on the agenda tonight. So if there's anyone who would need to address the Board on an item not on the agenda tonight, you may do so. Seeing none, I will proceed with starting our meeting. For those of us who haven't been in this intermediate school before or recently, for those who need to know, the restrooms are actually down this hallway all the way to the end, if you need to avail yourself of the restrooms. We have one item of business tonight, and that is to conduct a public hearing on the annexation by election petition related to the territory comprising of the Robstown Independent School District. We will hear a presentation shortly, but I wanted to begin with some brief opening remarks. First, I want to thank you all for your interest in Delmar College. We're very pleased that you all are here tonight and going to learn a little bit more about what we might be able to do in Robstown. We thank you for being here so that we can hear directly from you, the citizens in Robstown, about this opportunity. There is a website dedicated to this process and to the service plan that we've talked about that is on the Delmar College website, delmar.edu. It's under the Regents and Community section. You can follow some links. It's also scrolling on one of the title stories on our website, or you can just type "Robstown" into the search box at the right-hand corner, and you can find information about this. So if folks that you're talking to want to hear more information, please refer them to their web, to that website that will have all of the information that we are going to cover here tonight. I also want to thank the Robstown Independent School District and Superintendent Dr. Jose Moreno for allowing us to hold this hearing in the Solomon P. Ortiz Intermediate School. At this point in time, I'm going to officially declare the public hearing open at 6:04 PM. If you are interested in providing comments to the Board, then please sign up with one of these cards. Staff will then bring that card up to me. So if you would like, Mr. Rivera right there and Ms. Loretta Winters will have the cards and be able to pick those up if you would like to make public comment in a few moments. We will have a short presentation by Dr. Eskemia and the staff at Delmar College about the service plan, and then we'll have an opportunity for public comment following that presentation. I'd now like to turn it over to Dr. Mark Eskemia, President and CEO of Delmar College.
Good afternoon, and Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, Regents and community members, for being here tonight. I also want to give a special thanks to Robstown Independent School District for opening up these wonderful facilities to us, and certainly to all our Robstown community members for being here. Again, welcome to this afternoon's public hearing to the Board of the Board of the Board of Regents. There are seats. If you're too far back there and can't hear or can't see or something, there's some open seats up here, so feel free to move up here should you choose, and at any time at your convenience, please. I'm going to read some remarks, ladies and gentlemen, that are going to outline this evening's presentation, and the very important words as we take on this most important topic. "But in compliance with the Texas Education Code, this public hearing is the next step in the annexation by election process that was started when a petition signed by the required number of registered voters in Robstown Independent School District was submitted to the college in April. As required by law, the college has been following the steps necessary to place the annexation question requested by the signers of the petition on the November ballot. This hearing will provide the Board of Regents and the college administration an opportunity to receive comments from the public." So now, I would like to now, I'd like to turn it over to the colleges, our colleges' General Counsel, Mr. Augustin Rivera, and Executive Vice President and Chief Operations Officer, Lenora Keys, for a brief presentation before moving on into public comments. Mr. Rivera, Ms. Keys.
Thank you, Dr. Eskemia. Regents, community members. Under Texas law, registered voters within a district or an area, territory, that are not within the jurisdictional boundaries or the taxing boundaries of the Delmar College District have a right under law to petition and ask you to put the question of whether or not they should be included in the district on the ballot. That's what we have here. Tonight is the next step in the process that was initiated back in April. By way of background, on April 26, 2022, the college received petitions requesting an election on the question of the annexation of the territory encompassing the Robstown Independent School District. The signatures were verified by the college on May 9, 2022. At your board meeting on May 10, you accepted the petitions and directed staff to prepare a proposed service plan and arrange for a public hearing, per Texas Education Code, Section 130.065. On June 2, 2022, you approved, you approved a service plan that was prepared by staff and directed staff to publish it and to schedule a public hearing to take place within the territory, as required by law, and that's what you're doing here tonight. The next step in the process is this public hearing, and this is being conducted here within the boundaries of the Robstown Independent School District. And as Chair Scott pointed out to everyone, there is a webpage. There's a webpage where members of the public can go and get additional factual information on what's going on here. This, for everybody's purposes, is a copy of the map that we have presented to you before. This has been shown to you at other public meetings, and this shows you the current makeup of the Delmar College boundaries, and then you can see there where Robstown ISD would This is the timeline that we've shown you, and every time we show you the timeline, we make steps towards progression, towards your August 9 board meeting. You see that it's actually an interesting, we've talked about this, how the timing, you work backwards from the last election date, and then you've got a certain amount of time to take the next step. Well, you're taking the next step within the timeframe there that's allowed for the public hearing, and once you do this, then the next step would be to take up the issue of whether or not you're going to put it on the ballot at your August 9 board meeting. And you can see there when the election day is, November 8, 2022. Just some basic sections from the Education Code to put into context. "Texas public junior colleges shall be two-year institutions primarily serving their local taxing districts and their service areas in Texas, and offering vocational, technical, and academic courses for certification or associate degrees." You all are very familiar with this, but sometimes members of the public don't understand that your service area is actually much wider than your taxing district, and those are two different distinct geographical areas. Again, the Delmar College service area includes the territory you see there and the counties. That's the, that's the wide extent, that's the breadth of your, of your service area. Now generally, territory that's not within the, your district boundaries can be, can be brought in either by contract, which is a very difficult and almost impossible way to do, or by election. Election is the most common method, and that's what's being pursued here. So tonight, you've got your public hearing, and it's being held again, as required by law. The purpose of the public hearing is for you to hear input from members of the community on this issue. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Keys to continue on with discussion of the service plan.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera, and thank you all this afternoon, and to the public that's here today, too. Now we're going to start looking at the service plan itself, and it starts with the taxing implications are first. The service plan is posted on the college's website, as we've said, and provides specific information as mentioned previously. As you see, the maximum tax rate allowed under Texas Education Code is $1 per $100 assessed property valuation. Of this maximum rate, no more than 50 cents can be dedicated to paying for debt service. The maintenance and operations tax rate for 2021 is shown here, as well as the debt service rate. A combined tax rate per 100 assessed property valuation is zero point two eight three three four zero. The service plan document also provides for all existing tax exemptions for Delmar College and references the Regents' annual adoption of a resolution that sets the maximum maintenance and operations tax rate, which cannot increase taxes collected by more than 8% from the prior year without voter approval. Information from the Nuasis County Tax Assessor indicates that the average taxable home value in Robstown Independent School District is $59,038, and the tax impact at the present overall tax rate is an additional $167 annually, or $14 per month. The service plan also includes information on the in-district and out-of-district tuition and fee rates per term, per credit hour, as shown here for the academic year 2022. If Robstown ISD does come into the district, a significant benefit to the students and families is to pay the in-district tuition and fees rate. This shows a savings of $150 for a three-credit-hour course. An additional semester credit hours and the difference between the district, in-district and out-of-district shows a savings of $600 for a full-time student taking 12 credit The key points related to the services that are provided by the college are also indicated in the service plan. If voters approve at election, the college proposes to expand local delivery of services and programs, eligibility to vote in the DMC Board of Regents, the elections, and provide access to Delmar College facilities at the in-district rate, as well as the services you see here. The many college credit transfer programs and continuing education courses could be more accessible at the lower in-district tuition. The community and students could benefit from increased access to adult basic education such as GED programs. This program is generally supported by grant funding and could be expanded. Additionally, business community can take advantage of increased access to Texas Workforce Commission Skills Development Fund and engagement in workforce solutions of the close to This following section provides examples of facilities and campuses and programs that the college could offer at this lower in-district tuition benefit to the community and the The photo on the left is of the new Oso Creek Campus that will target science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM programs, including a focus on architecture, culinary arts, and the core curriculum. Articulation agreements are in place for programs with Tammud Corpus Christi and Tammud Kingsville for direct transfer. The photo on the right is an example of the state-of-the-art facility on the Heritage Campus, previously known as East Campus. This complex of building is home to the general academics of music. If the Robstown Independent School District comes into the taxing district, the programs will be at the in-district tuition. The Workforce Development Center is located on the Windward Campus, which is previously known as our West Campus, and provides state-of-the-art, highly technical and industrial training equipment. Programs listed on the right, such as process technology, instrumentation, and milrite, lead students to high-paying and in-demand jobs and careers. The programs will also be at the in-district tuition rate. These photos are examples of the types of equipment that the community, industry, and the college has invested in to provide hands-on training to prepare students ready to qualify for high-paying jobs. Again, students or residents from Robstown area and school district would be able to attend at the in-district rate. An additional facility is the Center for Economic Development, which provides small business owners and those who want to start businesses direct access to a variety of You can see those listed there on the left. The college has been providing dual-credit courses at Robstown Independent School District for many years. Over the past five years, approximately 1,500 students have taken classes at the in-district rate of $99 for a three-credit-hour course, or a continuing education course at the rates depending upon the course. This service plan could expand on the long-term relationships that has been proven to be very successful. And our next steps. The next steps are directed in the, at Texas Education Code, Section 130, as presented. However, in summary, the key steps are to finalize the public hearing, which we're in right now, provide the college's Board of Regents and administration with the opportunity to receive comments from the public, and with Board of Approval, an election for November the 8th could be conducted. This is all in line with following the timeline established in the calendar that was presented. And now, Madam Chair, we're ready for comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keys and Mr. Rivera. Ladies and gentlemen, you will have an opportunity to provide your comments to the Board. I will call your names up in the order that they were received. In addition, we're picking up some additional cards from folks that are bringing those up now. You'll have three minutes to comment. You'll see we do have a electronic timer, so if you'll just kind of keep an eye on that and wrap up your comments when the, when the timer is nearing its end. If you have a question as a part of your comments, we will not stop to answer it during your three minutes. However, we will provide factual responses at the end of the, at the end of all the public comments, if that information is readily available. If not, we will provide answers in a Q&amp;A section to be posted on the college's website, mentioned earlier, with the rest of the information on, on this effort. So I would like to call up in order, I received them, Mr. David Petrick will start first, and then I'll call Ms. Aurora Gomez after that. So, Mr. Petrick? Yes, please.
I am the Treasurer for Robstown for Delmar College, a specific-purpose political action committee. It is the belief of Robstown for Delmar College that the most important resource of Robstown are the children of Robstown, and that the children of Robstown should be afforded the same rights and privileges as the children of Corpus Christi. It is also the belief of Robstown for Delmar College that if access to Delmar College is offered to the students living within the Robstown Independent School District at the in-district tuition rates of Delmar College, like the other five school districts within Corpus Christi, more students from Robstown will be able to attend Delmar College, and with that higher attendance rate, Robstown will be able to provide a more skilled and educated workforce that will attract more businesses to Robstown and provide a more, and provide more jobs for future generations. The ultimate goal of Robstown for Delmar College is to provide more opportunities for the children of Robstown, so they can stay in Robstown with their families, where their families and homes are. My wife and I, my wife and I have owned a commercial building in Robstown for 30 years. During that time period, Robstown has decreased in population, decreased in population by 15%, while the population of Corpus Christi has increased by 28%. Why is this? The region's doing well, while Robstown continues to decline in population. Is there a relationship between the higher cost of tuition Robstown residents have to pay to attend Delmar College and the decline in population? I suggest there could be, this could be one of the root causes. The median income of Robstown is $35,000. The median income of Corpus Christi is $55,000. Why should the out-of-district families of Robstown pay 30% more in tuition costs to attend Delmar College when they come from a lower median income area? This is not equitable. This is not fair. This is not right. We are sitting here tonight because of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, which, which closes with the following sentence. "Congress shall make no law prohibiting the free exercise thereof, the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." On April 26, 2022, petition signatures of 482 registered voters of the Robstown Independent School District were submitted to the Delmar College Board of Regents by Robstown for Delmar College. The petition requests that you give the registered voters of Robstown Independent School District to write the vote in the upcoming November election on whether or not the Robstown Independent School District should be annexed into the Delmar College District. There was a book written in 2002 by Malcolm Gladwell. Name of the book is "Tipping Point: How the Little Things Make a Big Difference." On August 9, your vote to let the citizens of Robstown Independent School District choose the destiny of, choose their destiny could be the tipping point for Robstown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrick.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call on Ms. Aurora Gomez, and then after that will be Ricardo Basquez. Ms. Gomez?
Hello, my name's Aurora Rojas Gomez of Robstown. I am the daughter of the late Judge Lorenzo Rojas of Nuasis County, Precinct 5. The reason I bring up my father is because of what he stood for, education and the opportunity to create a better future. My father was all the, all for education for us kids attending school every day. When I was little, I was a migrant worker, which caused us to travel for many different areas of work. Although we were from home, we were away from home, my dad would always return to start the new year in September and stay till the end of the year, working hard all summer, followed by a school year. It was a hard life for us kids. Nevertheless, most of us did well in school. As for my dad, was concerned for education was the only option to break the cycle of migrant workers, life for a future for his family. At this time, I would like to thank the Delmar College for giving us, for giving my brothers and sisters and myself the future of an education. Three of my siblings attended Delmar and became registered nurses. After the graduation of local newspaper, after their graduation, a local newspaper interviewed them and printed out a picture. Oh, my dad was thrilled. He was so proud. Thank you, Delmar College. Although Delmar does offer early educate, college dual credits at high school levels, at the, not all students can participate because they are just trying to keep up with their current classes. For example, my son is a slow learner. Sometimes it takes him a year. It took him a year to accomplish what other kids did in six months. He took a course in Delmar for welding. He is, I'm very proud of him. He is now earning $45 an hour. I'm sorry, I don't like to speak. Again, thank you, Delmar. As for me, I went to Delmar and received a commercial driver's license. I drove over the road for five years. After that, I drove for the city of Corpus Christi for 10 years. Thank you, Delmar.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Mr. Basquez will be followed by Gilbert Gomez. Mr. Ricardo Basquez?
My name is Ricardo Basquez. I'm an old man. I'm 75 years old, and I lived in Robstown all my life. I have three degrees from A&amp;I Kings, Texas A&amp;I Kingsville, and at one time it was Texas A&amp;I Corpus Christi. But anyway, to make it brief, and I know the timer, and this is a strange timer that you have there, I want to thank the Board in general, every single one of you. You make the decision, and I want you to be, to make it positive for whatever percent, okay? I want to thank Carol Scott, the Chairman. I want to thank Dr. Mark Eskemia, and I want to thank David Petrick and Sarah Lopez and Yvette Bialobos and all the other folks that are wearing the blue shorts for supporting us here today. It's very important. Now, David said there were forty, eighty-two, 482, I counted 488 people that signed the list, so I don't know, it's pretty close, anyway. But I want to say that I've worked with different programs. I worked with migrant and seasonal farm worker programs at one time. I worked with the Texas Employment Commission at one time. I worked with the Department of Human Services at one time, and I always worked with Delmar in coordinating programs of different sorts and monitoring the nursing programs and nursing programs, et cetera. I was involved with that. I did the nursing homes, et cetera, at one time. But anyway, the thing we hear is, is not just for the kids in this high school, it's for the people in the community that can be 30 or 35 that want to pursue a career. So it's, when it's limits to the school, it doesn't cover everyone that could benefit. I've done GED classes, they want to go further. I had kids in my, in my GED classes that, I mean, when they came in, they could, didn't even have a car. I saw them a few years later, and they have a Mercedes. It can be done if you put your mind to it. So this is the kind of people who need to help, and we need you to support us in that facet, in that asset. Because, you know, without, and you know, one of the main things is representation. I want someone of us to be in the Board, so we can represent Robstown and give our opinion about what needs to be done with Delmar. And we cannot do it from out here, we need to do it from inside. That's the way you make change, progressive, good change for all the community, because what affects one person, one family here, black, white, or blue, makes no difference, will affect my family, because something can happen, like is happening in this country. It's very important that we work together to make this country better every single day. So please support us in this endeavor. I guess I made it in time.
Thank you, Mr. Basquez. Gilbert Gomez will be followed by Jimmy Morales. Mr. Gomez? Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing us to make some public comments here on this presentation. I want to thank you for being here, for giving the opportunity for the citizens of Robstown to be able to comment. I think I want to answer a couple of questions that were brought up, one by Mr. Petrick and one by Mr. Basquez, when Mr. Petrick brought up the question as far as why people are here in Robstown. I can answer that for him in talking to people every single day. Taxes, high taxes. People are moving out of the city because of several things. One is taxes. For example, when our tax rate in the city is almost 40 cents higher than the city of Corpus, that makes a big difference for people. When our school district tax rates are higher than Calaleen, higher than Tolosoma Way, that has a big impact on citizens also. That is what drives people out of the city of Robstown. So I'm not in favor of adding more taxes to the citizens of Robstown because that is what's driving people out of this city, okay? The other thing is that in talking to developers, talking to business people about operating or bringing a business to Robstown, new neighborhoods, I get asked all the time, why don't we have a brand-new neighborhood in Robstown? It's been over 20 years since we had a new neighborhood here in Robstown, 20 years. One of the things that developers look at is your overall tax rate, because they're going to sell those homes to these people that are going to have to pay the taxes. And would they rather live in the city where their taxes are going to be $4 combined or in a city or outside the city where it might be $3 or $3.50? That has a big impact on why people are reluctant to open a business here or they're reluctant to build a neighborhood here. When I was first elected as mayor, one of the premises was to lower tax rates, and we'd done that the first two years that I've been in office for the city of Robstown. I encouraged the school district to lower their tax rates, and they did some. To me, that is the progress that we need for our community so that we can attract industry, businesses, and home developments. Now, the other question that I want to answer is because when people say, well, I think a lot of the citizens that I talk to begin misinformation. A lot of people believe that if we're annexed into the Delmar taxing district, that you are going to open a campus here in Robstown. Your service plan doesn't say anything like that, and I want to make that clear to the citizens because that's what they're being told. That's what some of them understand that's going to happen, and I know that's not what your service plan says. I grew up in Robstown, born and raised in Robstown, very poor, as Ms. Gomez was saying. I know her dad, a good friend of mine. I grew up in the Blue Bonnet section of Robstown, very poor. We struggled. Education, a priority. I graduated from Delmar. You know, I know what it is to get an education, and I'm all for education, but those things are already being done here at the high school level. And according to your enrollment, most of the students that attend Delmar are at the high school level. They're taking classes there. This year, we had seven students graduate with an associate's degree along with their high school diplomas, and that's, to me, what we need to expand and encourage for the citizens of Robstown. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Mr. Morales will be followed by Jesus Rojas. So Mr. Morales, please.
I'm Jimmy Morales. I'm a city council member for Robstown. Reason I'm here today is because I have some concerns. For one, what is Delmar offering now that is not already being offered at Robstown ISD? I have a twin 18-year-old boy and a girl. They both, you know, took the time, went to summer school, you know, made the sacrifices. They both graduated with an associate's degree back in 2021. They graduated college with an associate's degree before high school. I mean, we didn't get charged additional taxes for what we're doing now. Now, we're talking about $14 a month is what we're looking at as far as taxes. That's now. What about later? I mean, right now, with the way the economy is, I can't see some of these citizens that are in fixed incomes able to pay the additional taxes. Number one, a lot of these properties just got reappraised. Some of them have tripled, even doubled, on their property taxes, which is outrageous. A lot of these people that are basically dictating the appraisals haven't even driven down here to Robstown, but yet they're real quick to give you three minutes or five minutes to speak, but never driven to Robstown to see exactly where we're living at. I mean, the taxes are just way too high. I just don't see this for Robstown, especially not with the economy right now. That's basically all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Mr. Rojas will be followed by Simona Rojas. So Jesus and then Simona Rojas.
For some reason, I'm a little nervous. I'm never typically nervous, but I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here. I am Commissioner Jesse Rojas with the Noises County Drainage District, number two. I am a 1997 Robstown graduate, and I like to give a lot of credit to Delmar. I attended Delmar after high school, and I think that that gave me the first real taste of politics. It was exciting. My first semester at Delmar, I decided to put my name in the hat for the student government, and I got elected. And I saw my name in the foghorn, and I thought I was on top of the world, and that was like so awesome that all these people... I made signs like we did in high school, running for student president and all that, and it was fun. I really liked it. So I came home and I picked up an application at the administration building, Catty Corner to here, to run for the Board of Trustees in 1997. In 1998, I was elected as the youngest school board member in the state of Texas, okay? And I tell everybody, it's like the mafia. Once you're in, you can never get out. So, you know, in 2016, I decided to... By that time, of course, I was an adult and married and had all these kids and whatever, so I decided to run for the Noises County Drainage District, and I won my election there. I currently sit as a senior commissioner. I got reelected in 2020. And the reason why that's important is because we are elected... One of our primary duties is obviously to set our tax rates there, and we have a pretty high, what I consider a pretty high tax rate there, okay? But it is also my duty as a father. I have currently Isabella, who is going to be a sophomore in Benketti ISD, currently taking Delmar classes. She took her first class, summer one, and she'll terminate, I think, on Tuesday, and she gets the in-district rate, okay? I also have Christian. He just graduated from Robstown ISD a couple of weeks ago or a month ago, whatever, but nonetheless, he's going back to Delmar for instrumentation classes in the fall. He started the program late, and he was able to acquire over 30 hours of college credits. But now that he's going back, he lives out of district, so it's going to cost us more money. So I'm here as both an elected official, saying to my constituents, let's look for a way to lower our tax rate, because the drainage district is a taxing entity, and the only way that we're going to be able to lower our taxing rate is if we increase our boundaries, right? So the more people that live in the district, for the drainage district, we can lower our taxes. That's one way to do it, but we're open for that, okay? And then, as a father, I'm very, very interested in to see what Delmar can do for our community. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. Simona Rojas will be followed by Mary Ann Sines.
Okay, obviously, family members all here from the Rojas family, the Rojas clan. Our father has been with us for a very long time here as a judge, for very many, many, many years. So we all have that duty in our Rojas family to let y'all know that we need this for our future children, my granddaughter, my great-grandchildren, whatever it may be. But as my sister was saying, that it took my father for 18 years to raise eight children in a very low-income status as a judge. You don't make that much money as a judge. And I just want y'all to know that, how do I say it? It just takes a lot. I just want to know how we're going to do with the taxes? How are we going to do it for those who are low-income? How are we going to do it for those single parents who cannot afford Delmar prices? I mean, I had my daughter and my son, they were going to school, and I could barely afford them. I can barely afford myself to go to school, work three jobs just so I can go to get my education, even though I'm prior military, okay? So I just want to know taxes, tuition fees, books, what can you do for our children, our future children? I understand that there's a lot of students who graduated with degrees and diplomas and associate's degrees and all that. Y'all paid for that. The school district paid for that. But what about for those who didn't meet the criteria quite... Like, I have a best friend who said that some people are meant for universities, some of us are made for trades, you know, just off the streets and straight to working in construction, farm working, whatever it may be, out in the fields, whatever it may be. But our children right now, our future children right now, I just want to know how you're going to help us with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. Mary Ann Sines, followed by Ramaldo Juarez.
My name is Mary Ann Sines, and I'm the mayor pro temp for the city of Robstown. Welcome to our facilities here. I'm also a teacher. I teach at Robstown Early College High School, and I've been there for 31 years, and I'm a lifelong resident. I left for a few years, came back. There's a lot of good points that have been brought up tonight, and I would hate to be sitting in your seats. I've sat on the city council every once a month, and it's a difficult task. But as a citizen of this community, it is my duty to present to my constituents the best option as far as what Delmar is offering. I'm a homeowner. My home is probably appraised at about $140,000 a year. So that means that the $14 for the $59,000 in my household is going to go up to about $45 a month, about $600 a year, okay? I raised a child, a single parent, and worked as a teacher, which we know that it doesn't provide a lot, but it did provide for me. I was able to support my child and also provide a college education at a university. My thing is that I work at the high school. I see the programs that we have. I see what Delmar does. I have nothing against that. I just feel that you guys are just awesome. But also, I want to know what the regions, the Board of Regents, what your commitment is to my community as a community leader. I want to know what... The first question is, why was the Northwest Branch closed? I know it had to do something with the facility, possibly the lease option, whatever that might be. If that was the case, then why now? Why don't you come into Robstown? Why didn't you come to the city of Robstown, to our mayor, and come and say, you know, hey, let's sit down, let's talk, let's see if our school district doesn't have a facility? Let's see if the city doesn't have a facility that we can provide for you at no cost to bring in Delmar? We don't have that problem. The problem is a 28 cents on the dollar. That's going to come out of my pocket. That's my problem, okay? Also, my other thing is, what is the future? What are you going to offer my community, our students, our people, as far as degree plans, as far as course offerings? What are you going to give us if this thing passes? We're giving you a lot. We're bringing everything to the table. What are you bringing for us, okay? Also, do we get a regent? Do we get a representative on your board? It's an important... These are important questions. These are questions that are coming through my mind as I'm hearing all this. And again, I'm not against nothing to do with Delmar. I have a college degree myself. I'm all for it, but I have to look in the best interest of my community. And at this point, these are my questions, and I look forward to answers on them. Again, I welcome you to our city. I'll welcome you to our school district, and I hope that I, you know, brought some light to some of the questions, and I hope that you can answer them. And I really appreciate you giving me the time to come up here and pick your brain a little bit, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sines. Dr. Juarez will be followed by Ron Benavides.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Escamilla, welcome to Robstown. It's a pleasure to have you here, and certainly welcome also to our audience that is attending tonight's program. And most of all, thank you for allowing me a whole hour to give you my comments. I'm currently the president of the Robstown Independent School District Education Foundation. Our primary mission is to help our teachers and our students. I'm also very proud to be a member of good core volunteers that run the local area Robstown museum. This evening is an opportunity for the future. It's not about what we've got today, but it's about what, you know, we can envision for having in the future. Robstown really is part of Delmar. I know for a fact that Professor Mike Gonzalez, who is greatly revered at Delmar, he's a native of Robstown, one of my high school classmates, greatly admired him, outstanding professor in English. Also, probably everyone in this room, maybe personally or our families, have been touched by Delmar. If we stay in a hospital, just today myself, I had some PT sessions. Guess who was taking care of me? A PT assistant from Delmar, nurses from Delmar. We have technicians in our refineries. We all know that story. On a personal note, my wife is an alumni of Delmar from the nursing program, and so is my late brother, who is a radiology technician. Well, we saw the presentation, the great services and opportunities that will be allowed, you know, by being a part of the district. So we don't need to repeat all of those. What we don't know are the unknown factors. The motivations, a factor of graduating students that had not thought about pursuing a higher education, if it's available to you in your own community, you'll think twice about it, especially, you know, at reduced tuition rates. Also, the motivation factor of those who currently have two years of college are saying, well, I've got two years under my belt, you know? How about going on for a four-year degree? I know for a fact, and in the early days of when Dr. Escamilla became president, he and I sat at Delmar at one of the business tables and signed an articulation agreement for the College of Engineering. For those of you who are not aware what articulation agreements are, it is an understanding between institutions about what courses can be transferred and what courses could be accepted for various degree plans. We have great articulation agreements, Delmar does, with A&amp;M Corpus Christi and A&amp;M Kingsville. What a wonderful opportunity. You talk about savings of money. We're not only talking about saving the first two years. I mean, you get your first two years at Delmar. Instead of going to two years at a four-year university, you're saving thousands of dollars. I understand and acknowledge the fact that it is a tax issue. No one in this room is against education, no one. Our leadership, I know them well, their heart is in promoting the education for our community and for our kids. The solution and the challenge for us is to find a solution that is not at the expense of educating our next generation. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Juarez. Ron Benavides will speak next, followed by Sarah Lopez. If anyone else intends to speak, if you have a card filled out, please wave it high, and Mr. Rivera will pick it up. Dr. Rivera will pick it up. Mr. Benavides?
Well, folks, maybe y'all. There's an old saying that if it walks and looks and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. The opportunities and the opportunistic endeavors that y'all are delivering, this wonderful community of Robstown and Robstown ISD, is awesome. Now, there's been some great comments by some of the people up here at the podium, great comments, but what we have... But what we have to do, y'all, and the people over here, we have to understand that future endeavors is our children, our grandchildren, our nieces and nephews, and the next generation and the following generations to come. And we're putting our hands in your, in your hands. You are the guide for us, and of course, everybody in this room is a cotton picker, no question about it, red, white, and blue. And everybody here, most of us, graduated from Robstown ISD, and we're proud of it. So let's continue forming this foundation. Let's continue setting a blueprint and a roadmap for the children that we love and endear every day in our daily lives. And with your help and your assistance, and your ownership, and your fellowship, and your guidance, we can do it. Now, I hear a lot of times people are making comments about A, B, C, D, E, F. Well, and I'm not going to talk, but about individuals, but there's four areas in the world of development, and I'm a developer. Number one, industrial development. Number two, residential development. Number three, and this is part of my talk here, industrial, residential, commercial, and the main one is economic development. If we had those four components in this area right now, we wouldn't be talking about $14 a month tax rate, believe me. We would not be talking about $14 a month, $167. If people would understand what those four components can do to a city, just look at some of our other cities in the whole coastal bend, they're doing tremendous behovements, tremendous enhancements, and we can name them, Portland, Sutton, Beeville. And if you do your homework on those cities, I mean, true homework, not just educational, but commercial, the ones I just mentioned, especially economic, you're going to see how the tax rate takes care of itself. Because all of a sudden, we have development for all our children, our grandchildren, our nieces and nephews. It works. It works, and it doesn't have to be an agency, it has to be us, con cariño, for our people, for the love of our children, and our grandchildren, and our nieces and nephews. That's what's important. So the people that came and talked about the positive, positiveness of Robstown, God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Benavides. Ms. Sarah Lopez. And then following her will be Lori Garza.
Good evening, and thank you, thank you for coming to Robstown. I, I'm leading this effort of Robstown for Delmar, and I've had the chance to talk to so many people that tell me the reason, basically, for, and they're always talking about it's right, what Ron says, you know? They talk about their children, their grandchildren, their great-grandchildren, and they tell me, I may not have anything, I may not have any money to leave my great-grandchildren, but I will leave them this, I will vote for. If it means a sacrifice of me paying more right now on taxes, I'm going to do it, you know? It's an investment. So you've got to invest in your community, you know? Now, let's talk a little bit more about the taxes, about the exemptions, and I love this. The elderly and the disabled will get $50,000 exemption. Now, in a $59,000 home you're talking about, and $5,000 homestead, so in a $59,000 home, guess what? You pay $4,000 on that value per year, you're going to pay $11.20. That's a number seven Whataburger, you know, with cheese. That's what it is. And I think I'm willing to, now, the glow homes, the government land office homes, everybody's saying, oh, but my house is valued at $200,000 and blah, blah, blah. No, you're not going to be taxed on your $200,000 home. You're going to be taxed on the appraised value of your home before they tore it down. So that is what we want to do, is educate the people on that. And as for, yes, we're very proud that one of our own Jimmy's kids, Caleb and Megan, they graduated, they got their degree before their high school degree. But what about the rest of the kids? What about the, 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 those that play football, baseball, those that struggle just in getting their high school diploma? We can't leave them out. I mean, we've got to, so what do they do? They have, they still have to travel to Delmar and to get their education, okay? So this is for our kids, and it's like Mary Ann's T-shirt says, first you must believe. It's taken a new meaning with me. So this is my vision. I was gone for four years, I'm back, I've always wanted to come back to make a difference in Robstown, and I am making a difference, okay? So my vision is this, that we vote for, when we do that, we will have a special election to get a new regent on the board to fight for us. My vision is, and it's already in the works, new homes by the Aviator Field that they want to, you know, that, that's in the, in the works, getting bids for it, the Aviator Field will be fixed. And hopefully, after that, then Delmar will find a home in Robstown. Let's do it. First, you've got to believe.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Next, we'd like to hear from Ms. Lori Garza.
Good evening. I see two differences here. One, the ability to vote in the Board of Regents election. Will Robstown citizen be allowed to run for a seat in the next election? Two, a district tuition lowered by $50 a credit hour, but it's going to cost us money. You heard yourselves, the average salary of a Robstown citizen is $35,000. I am very familiar in today's social media world. I also sit on the school board for Robstown Independent School District, yet I heard of this meeting just this week. We have several citizens who do not have the access to learn of this town hall meeting. I just want to make you aware, in case you don't know, increasing this tax rate in Robstown is a bad word. It is. None of you would know that, not being from here. I am not here to take a stand either way, because we're all for kids. There is not one person in this room who does not support our kids. I am simply asking you to put forth a little more effort, so all of our citizens can hear the pros and cons, and allow them to decide for their, themselves for this election. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garza. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment at this time? Seeing none, I am going to ask Mr. Rivera if he could respond to the question about the regent representation and what that process would be moving forward if the election were to pass.
The, 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 the new people, I mean, the new district, the voters in the new district would have the opportunity to vote in the next election for, I mean, in, in the Delmar College Region election, at-large, as well as, as whatever single-member district is in there. But in terms of redistricting, that would, I mean, you all went through that recently, you'd have to redo that again. And so lines would be, you know, have to be examined, and populations would have to be balanced out. That's how, that's what I understand.
So there are, there are five single-member districts and four at-large regents on the, on the Delmar College Board. So your immediate representation would be by the regent representing District Three, and between the election, the passage of the election, and our next regular regent election in 2024, there would be another redistricting process to draw new boundaries, so that you would have the opportunity to vote for a District Three regent when that election comes up again. But you would, you would at the next regular election in 2024, be able to vote for the, for the at-large regents who would be coming up for reelection at that time. I hope that clarifies the, the, the regent election process. Are there any other factual questions, Ms. Keys, Dr. Escamilla, or?
Yes, thank you. I can answer the question regarding the Northwest Center.
That's what I was going to bring up.
It has not been closed. It was closed temporarily due to COVID, when everyone, when we all closed down in 2020. However, this last semester, this last year, we offered several courses out there in the academic transfer program and in continuing education. So the Northwest Center in Cal Allen is still operational.
Did we hear that back there? Was that plenty loud? Everybody good? Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions that, that you feel like we can answer at this time? We did take, again, copious notes on the questions that were asked, and we will be able to respond to those. Dr. Escamilla?
There was, there is one affordability question that was brought up earlier on, and, and the question was, how can we afford things? How can you help and that sort of thing? Regardless of what's going on and how, how we proceed and so forth, I want to know, Ms. Mary McQueen is here from our foundation, and, and what I know is that we have been offering more scholarships annually consecutively. I think we're up to $1.8 million in scholarships. That's in addition to financial aid and Pell and all these other kinds of things. And so scholarships have never been in greater demand and in greater supply. That's the good news. And so between financial aid and the foundation scholarships, there's, there's ample support. And please know that you can go to our website, you can call us. I brought a few business cards, I obviously did not bring enough, but you can find me on the website, and you can find our foundation, and Ms. Mary McQueen is here as well, to provide for any, any sort of, of financial aid, be it through, I want our Student Services Vice President Patricia Dominguez is here as well, to answer any of those questions. So please don't, don't hesitate. We brought, I want, if I could ask our Delmar College team, everybody, please raise your hand, so that you can see the team that we brought out here and so forth, that, that we're, we're here to assist, okay, and answer any further questions specifically. If you've got any kind of a need for anybody in your friends, family, in the community, whatever, ask us, please, we're here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Regents, at this time, we don't have an opportunity to do a Q and A as a Board of Regents, but you're welcome to visit with individuals as we close the meeting. I would like to once again thank the Robstown Independent School District, Superintendent Dr. Moreno, and Ms. Lori Flores-Garza, School Board President, for being here. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to use your facilities. We look forward to continued conversation, and as was stated during the presentation, the next step would be for the Board of Regents to consider whether or not to post, to place this action on our November 8 ballot, and that discussion and decision will happen at our August 9 meeting. It's a Tuesday, August 9. Again, look at the website if there's additional information you need, and several of us will be staying around to answer questions as well. Thank you all, yes, sir? 1:00 p.m., I'm sorry, on, on our August meeting where that discussion and decision will happen will be at 1:00 p.m., and those meetings are held at the Delmar College Center for Economic Development, which is across the street from Ray High School, used to be the old Kmart back in the days, it's on Castoras and Staples Street, and that's where our Board of Regents meetings are now held at the Center for Economic Development. Again, thank you all very much for being here tonight and for your comments. We look forward to continued conversation. This meeting is adjourned at 7:04 p.m. Thank you.